Call to order this regular city council meeting for Monday, the 23rd of May. If we could all stand with the legislative seats.
Our allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, Holly, will you call the roll, please?
Lanyon, Pratt.
Here.
Bellinger.
Here.
Siebel. Rhines.
Here.
Gilroy.
Here.
Hanson.
I'm sorry.
Hanson.
I am, really.
You aren't here. I did receive an email from Councilman Lanyon, and I'll tell Councilman Siebel that they were not able to be here this evening, so I would entertain a motion to excuse absences.
I'll make a motion to excuse.
Thank you. Do I support? Thank you. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And now it's an opportunity to approve the agenda for this evening unless there's changes that need to be identified on you.
Make a motion to approve the agenda.
Thank you. Thank you. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. opposed? Motion carries. All right, now we have an opportunity for audience participation with a maximum of five minutes. Do I have anybody that would like to come forward? Hi, Monica. State your name and your address for our records, please.
Hi, my name is Monica Schaefer. I live at 1691 Osprey Avenue, Williamson, Michigan. And I am here today just to talk to everybody. I am running for the current county commission seat. It'll be district number 15. They did some redistricting, so our current county commissioner is Randy Schaefer. He has been our county commissioner for approximately 38 years. So he will be retiring, and they did a redistricting of all the county commission seats. So we're going to be adding another district seat, so there will be a district number 15, and that will be our district. With that district that encompasses Williamson Township, Williamson, Locke, Leroy, and three precincts in Meridian Township. So what we're going to be doing is we're going to be dropping off Stockbridge and Dansville area, and we're going to be gaining in Meridian Township on the east side of there. Randy Schaefer again is going to be retiring, 38 years, and he, basically, we had a wonderful chit-chat of the different things that encompasses the county commission role. And I have been very beyond blessed to receive a 100% endorsement by Commissioner Schaefer. And we actually sit down usually about every two weeks, and we discuss all the topics of the county commissions, so that in November, when I become your next county commissioner, I'll be able to take rate over and dive right in and be an active person in this district. Because more than anything, that's what we need. We need to continue keeping the seat to have a voice at the table at the county commissioners. So I think that's the most important, and we need a voice in the township. We need a voice in the city, because I believe you've been working, and the manager's been working very well with Randy and the previous manager, to give some of the American Rescue Plan funding monies brought back in. And I think that's the most important part, is to have somebody who's active in the community, who knows about the community, who's been here for long enough time with them. A small business owner. We have Schaefer Raspberry, a UPEC production on Beaman Road. I have my degree in integrated supply management, where I worked for General Motors right down in Flint, Michigan, right down in operation supervision. And then, after that, I went into sales and received my MBA at that time also. And then I had the beautiful blessing of being able to be home and raising six children, which three of them are in college now, two in high school, one at the elementary level. And I'm very involved in our community, so I just naturally know that this is definitely the next step for me and for, to be a voice in our community. And I think that honesty and trust are big aspects, and I believe that if you talk to people, I would believe that people would say that I'm trustworthy, I'm honest, and a very approachable. Approachability needs to be very important. I just came from, today I did coffee hours at Big B in Meridian Township, so that I can sit down and I need to analyze Meridian Township as the newest territory in the area. And so then I went and I walked door to door for about three and a half hours in Meridian Township to get a feel for it, and, you know, it's going to be a wonderful addition to the district. I had phenomenal reception, and it was just enjoyable. So, is there any question? Well, you can't take any questions. So again, I'm just here to introduce myself. I do not have anybody running in the primary against me. I run the Republican ticket, but like I tell most people, when it comes down to the November election, it's much more about finding somebody that is a local voice, that is approachable, that you know, and that will work together, regardless, Republican or Democrat. When we get down together at that local level, we have to work together. It's not about the state and the national issues. It's about our community. And so again, I just wanted to come and introduce myself and say I look forward to working with you. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Monica, for being here. Do we have anybody else that would like to come forward?
Yes, please.
Hi, Ken.
Kent Hall, 509 Red Cedar Gold Ward, also known as Wrinkle Street. Although I don't know. There's been a little misinformation. I can't direct that at any one person. Those things just happen. But I'm here to tell everybody that the Memorial Parade is on, like always, except for the last three years. Starts Monday, 10 o'clock, up at the Commons, the old school there, right straight down to McCormick Park, the Olive Honor, where I spent till 10:30 last night planting flowers and doing all kinds of stuff. Bottom line, the American Legion will lead off with a color guard. Any veteran is invited to join us, and rides will be available for those that can't or don't want to walk for whatever reason. And, let's see. I've already, you know, it's funny, the marching band here, every year I called, you know we're going to be there. This time I couldn't get through, and she was calling me on the other line trying to get there. So that's how this stuff usually goes, it just falls into place. Sacrifice is meaningless without remembrance. So join us in honoring the brave men and women who gave their life in all wars. Far too often, the nation as a whole takes for granted the freedoms all Americans enjoy. Those freedoms were paid for by the lives of others. Few of us actually knew them. That is why they are all collectively remembered on one special day. That's Memorial Day. And if you have any questions, you can contact me. My phone will be out here, so. 810-397-4663.
Thank you, Ken. All right, moving forward on our agenda, we have our council meeting minutes of May 9. I'm looking for approval unless there's changes that need to be made.
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes as soon as I can.
Thank you. Do I support? Thank you. All those in favor?
Yes.
Aye. Motion carries. Noah, you have an opportunity to review our accounts payable, which was just one page.
Yeah, I was just going to say, it was the shortest one I've had ever, so thank you.
I didn't have a chance to review it all, and with that being said, I didn't find any outliers or anything that raised eyebrows. So after checking, I would make the recommendation that we pay check 75500 dated 5/22 through check 75521 dated 5/5. ETF number 262 and ACH account 260, and we're 261, in the amount of $201,589.55.
Thank you, Noah. And if Rachel were here, I would direct this to Rachel, but she's not here. So John, we just made a final bond payment on the Tobias and Lynn sewer. So that's amazing.
Yeah, thank you. I actually started that when I came to my report to point that out. It was a 10-year bond, and it's finally paid off.
Nice.
So that'll really free up some capital to do some much needed growth improvements.
Right, thank you.
Did we also pay off the back there? Was that this last month or was that before that?
I would have to go back and look. I think we have another payment on that.
Yeah.
Really?
Yep, yep. If there are no questions or concerns with our accounts payable, I'm looking for support for that.
Support.
Great, thank you all. Holly, will you call the roll, please?
Rhines.
Yes.
Gilroy.
Yes.
Hanson.
Yes.
Pratt.
Yes.
Bellinger.
Yes.
All right, moving along, we have three action items this evening. The first is the consideration of a resolution to adopt our 2022-2023 fiscal year budget and mileage rate. And then we do have a recommended motion by City Manager Hannaford.
I'll make a motion to approve a resolution adopting the fiscal year 2022-2023 budget for the city of Williamson, appropriating the amounts necessary for municipal purposes and providing for the levy of the amount necessary to be raised by adварium taxes upon real and personal property for municipal purposes.
Thank you, Ann.
Support.
Thank you. Any questions for Mr. Hannaford before I ask for the roll call? All right, Holly, will you call the roll, please?
Rhines.
Yes.
Gilroy.
Yes.
Hanson.
Yes.
Pratt.
Yes.
Bellinger.
Yes.
All right, next, we have reappointment of Terry B. Nelson to the Parks and Recreation Commission for a term to expire 6/30 of 2025.
I'll make a motion to nominate Terry Nelson to the Parks and Recreation Committee for a term to expire to.
30.
30, 2025.
Thank you. All right, thank you all. Thank you.
But I'm the Parks and Rec guy. Well, you're the back at first.
Holly, will you call the roll, please?
Gilroy.
Yes.
Hanson.
Yes.
Pratt.
Yes.
Bellinger.
Yes.
Rhines.
Yes.
All right. Oh, good, excellent. So now our last action item is our Jubilee fireworks consideration. We do have a memo in here, and I'll go ahead and turn this over to Mr. Hannaford.
Thank you, Mayor. Mayor Gilroy, nor is the council. Please present the request for fireworks for the Jubilee this year. It's always, it's always an exciting time for Jubilee. I know that here, but to have fireworks be part of it, it's a big deal. Not every community is able to do that. And so I know it's a lot of, a lot of folks get a lot of delight from that. So the recommendation is pretty straightforward. It's just to approve the request. Mark Joseph with Sparkies Fireworks did supply the application. It does say 2021, but it should say, it says 2022 for this coming year. There's always questions when you do fireworks in town about municipal liability coverage, and we do have the rider through MML to provide that coverage as a community.
Great.
It's actually pretty cheap. It's only like a hundred bucks. Lot cheaper than parades.
All right.
If I have any real questions, I just look forward to the fireworks and the celebration.
Great, thanks.
Got a question on that guy? Consumer grade versus display grade. In layman's terms, do you know what the difference is there?
Dan can tell us. I was just going to ask him because he's on Jubilee.
It's the height, the size of the shells that they launch, and the height that they'll go in the air. That's the difference between the consumer grade and the professional grade. Mark is actually a local guy, and he's done professional in the past. He's doing the consumer grade now because he actually owns a large consumer grade fireworks store, and that he puts on a very good show with the consumer grade. And you don't have to have, if you're doing the professional grade, which we would have no problem getting if you wanted to, but there's a lot more hoops you need to jump through. You actually start getting federal agencies involved, when you start doing the professional grade, like when the Baptist Church used to do it, they had, would actually get interviews from ATF and things like that. So Mark can put on a really good show with the consumer grade, very safe show, and it actually, it brings our costs down a little bit, and not quite as many hoops to jump through with going there.
That fireworks show in 2021 was one of the highlights of the Jubilee.
Oh, it was amazing, and I have to assume it's going to be bigger and better this year.
It is. Zinda's came back on board as the fireworks sponsor again. Big thank you to Zinda's. And Mark, Mark always adds quite a bit of his, of his own product and funds on top of that, because this is his hometown. He takes a lot of pride in the show. So he always goes above and beyond what we provide him with. And we had, everybody loved it so much last year. It was the first time in probably 20, 25 years since Jubilee had fireworks, and we got so many good reports. But we had people coming up to us and telling us, we don't miss the fireworks shows when we go to Disney, and the show we just saw was better than what we see at Disney, and things like that.
Yeah.
So we, we were determined that we were going to bring it back again this year because so many people loved it. That's going to be on Friday night after dusk. So again, they're going to go off from the topless sledding mill, same places last year, and I hope I rip them though. It's going to be very tight.
Excellent.
What's the actual date there, Friday?
That is June 24.
24.
Always the third week of June, with the exception of last year because we had COVID. So we are back on schedule, and we'll talk more about Jubilee later in the meeting. So I'm looking for that motion for this Jubilee fireworks consideration, please.
I'll make a motion to approve request for Mark Joseph with Sparkies Fireworks to have fireworks at Howard Dalston Park in Williamson on Friday, June 24, 2022, as part of the Red Cedar Jubilee with notification made to NISA.
Thank you so much. Do I support?
Support.
Great, thank you so much. If there's no other questions, I will go ahead and have Holly call the roll, please.
Hanson.
Yes.
Pratt.
Yes.
Bellinger.
Yes.
Rhines.
Yes.
Gilroy.
Yes. All right, moving along, we are on to discussion items. We do not, we do not have any discussion items for this evening. We do, we did not receive any correspondence. So I'll move right to our department head reports and start out with John.
Thank you, Members of Council. Mayor Gilroy, I just wanted to remind folks there will be a planning commission meeting on Tuesday, June 7. We do have two special ladies' public hearings at night. Those have been posted on our website for some time, and you sent out the required notices to the property owners that were within 300 feet. Also, our Tifa EDC boards met last week. Tifa 2B really has a big decision to make about the Ice House building. As you know, there was a purchase agreement that was in the offing, and the purchaser never signed it and is possibly having exact thoughts about doing the project. So, so in June, that board will have a decision to make on how to proceed with that, if in fact the prospective developers are all interested. And those things happen from time to time. So that's where we're at with that. Part of the discussions were, if it does, if it does come to that, offering up for, you know, for sale for 60 days or so, and see what we get. We'll really get to the point where we have to make a decision. I think all, you know, the building's been there. Hasn't had a lot of work done in in a long time, and it's getting to a really kind of a crisis mode over there. And finally, just, you know, we talked about, in our nine-minute meeting, we talked about having a busy summer and fall. So we tried to lay this out, and they're not necessarily in order of importance, making like that, but and I do want to point out, June, so, June 27, the road diet for M43, it's for the road, not for the beer. Because somebody pointed that out to me when I spoke in the chamber once in the last week. So that was kind of funny.
Yeah, that was good.
But for each of these, you know, the idea is council will get a small packet specific to this item, to these items, at least two weeks in advance of the work session. That way, if you can sort of, you know, pre-suggest any kind of questions to staff or kind of start getting the rest of them in mind. And the idea is a lot of these issues are challenges have been identified. They've been talked about for years. And so it's not to really go back over the history in its entirety, but to talk about, you know, here we are, what's within our scope, our grasp, finding a solution to make some of these improvements. And I picked road diet first because some of the old discussions, it's really, if we were to pursue that, at least the initial phase, it's just paint. I don't mean to minimize the work that has to be done, but it's just, they were talking to folks at MDOTs and, and a kind of a good twist of fate for us. My wife's cousin is now the chief operating officer for MDOT.
Wow.
He was appointed last week, so it's nice to have friends in high places like that.
Right.
I don't know if that'll get us any more favorable treatment, but at least we'll return our phone calls.
Yeah.
But anyway, so I take that one first, and then just kind of moving through the list. There's been a lot of talk about this discussion, or a lot of discussion about this building and the Bernard City that was done. We'll share that with council, you know, well in the end of the meeting, and talk through that. I think there's some good points, and there's some solid points to talk about. And the next two, water and wastewater, we will have, council will be asked to approve a rain study here, probably at the next meeting, and we'll get rolling on that and have that completed for those critical infrastructure meetings. And then finally, the last one in September is just sort of a broad brush economic development discussion.
Right.
And then each of these, we'll invite members of the public and the community to be involved and participate when it's rolling.
Great. I love the list. I like this a little bit better, that we're going to give dedicated time to each of these instead of doing a goal-setting session and not really being able to dig in. Because like you just said, we, most of these on here, we've talked about, but now it's time to try to put into action what we've been talking about. And so I like, I like this, and I think it's, it's good, it's aggressive, and it's time. So I appreciate that, and COVID really kind of gave us that pause that we didn't anticipate, and it's nice to get back on track, so I appreciate that. So thank you. Any questions for John on his report?
Procedural question about the planning commission. If I were to show up there, I wouldn't be, you know, officially representative of the city council or anything like that. Could I still ask questions or could I?
Yes.
Absolutely.
Yes, as a citizen, you can. The only thing that we can't ever, well, it has happened before, and Tim has had to advise, if we have more than four members of council at a particular meeting, that it's quorum. So I think one time we, like, short straws and asked somebody to leave, so that we did not violate property's rule of orders. But, but you can always say that you are here as a private citizen. You're not representing council. And Tim always advises us very well.
But a few years ago, I did that at a planning commission meeting. There was a development going on near, near my house. Admiral was adding on a gas station, so I came and spoke at that.
No big deal.
No, as a, as a member of the community, you have that right.
As a former planning commission person, I'm kind of curious to see how things developed. I saw a couple of years ago.
Good, excellent. So thank you very much, John. Appreciate that. Moving along, we've got Chief here this evening. How are you?
I'm good. How are you?
Good.
Well, good evening, and thank you for giving me a few minutes. The PD, we're doing great, fully staffed. Everybody's back healthy again. Had a couple off of COVID.
Oh, wow.
So I kind of worked our schedules a little different, and everybody was really good and flexed our schedules, so we're not good. But they've been busy. Midnight guys have been all over the drunk drivers. We took out three so far, and one being a super drunk. I think they were like a two, four, two, five. So unfortunately, those folks are still driving through town, but the midnight officers are very proactive in that. Also, so far this month, we've had three domestic violence arrests. One involving a weapon, where a weapon was discharged in a residence. So that kind of, that got pretty serious real quick, but the guys took care of that and were able to get it under control, and nobody got hurt. We're getting a couple intimidation and threats complaints, an MDOP case. But just to run the mail, but also several assists to Meridian, I'm sorry, with medical assists to NISA. So we've been doing a lot of that, but we, I mentioned Meridian, but we have been going over there because they're short-staffed and they can work here, so a lot of mutual aid going on. So, so the officers are keeping very busy and.
Excellent.
Warm weather's keeping people a little faster through town, so we're putting more out there.
They're hurrying to get to Twisters or, you know, somewhere.
Yeah, I'm sure. But yeah, no, we're doing great, thank you.
Good, good. And you're about a month out from Jubilee, so.
We are prepping for that. Working with the, with the Memorial Day Parade.
Excellent.
We're all on schedule for that and Jubilee, and so we're getting the meetings going, and we're ready.
Awesome. Well, thank you. Thank you so much. Anybody have any questions for Chief, Terry?
Is there like a website or something like that, that's like the police blotter for Williamson? These are the police events that happen? So just kind of a report from you, and then just kind of, that's what showed up?
Yep. And we know that they're busy and keeping our community safe, and that's what's important. So appreciate that. All right, moving right along, subcommittee committee reports. I'll start with Tom.
I actually couldn't attend the last NISA meeting, so no one did in my place.
Okay.
Just a quick update, they did have the report from the auditors, so they accepted the audit. There was some discussion related around the fire that recently occurred. And then they also reviewed all the ambulance runs and all that. And as a citizen, I spoke up and thanked them for rescuing my wife or father or not. So it's really nice. I gave a lot of information to Tommy to review with a bunch of some of that, so.
Okay. Excellent. All right, well, it's always good when we can back each other up. Thank you so much for doing that. Terry?
Correct, didn't you mean?
Okay, all right. No, you had your NISA, but anything else? No, no.
No, nothing.
Nothing was ZVA.
Okay. All right, well, I am going to ask Dan to give us a little bit more information about Jubilee, since I ended with him for, you know, committee, so I'll just, you can use this time as your council member comments, and then I'll, you know, wrap it around.
So we've got the 51st Jubilee coming up. It's going to be the 20th through the 26th of June. Is, as Mayor mentioned earlier, it's always the third full week in June. It took me a long time to remember this, but it's always the week of Father's Day.
Yes.
It's like that, it's like, oh, Father's Day. So the tent always gets put up during, during Father's Day Sunday, so that's how I remember now. But we have a lot of the cool events that we were able to bring in last year for the 50th. We're bringing back like the fireworks. I don't know if everyone caught it, but we had a formation flyover of the Grand Parade last year. That gentleman contacted us. He's coming back again this year. So make sure if you're lined up for the Grand Parade, you look up, he'll be up there with his three friends.
Good.
That was a, that was a good time.
Was that the one or two bombers or something like that?
Uh, they were more like bi-wings and single wings.
Yeah.
Prop.
He did have two of the guys trailing smoke, so maybe that's, had you think of that? There's a video of it. I believe there's a video of it, if you scroll way back on the Jubilee Facebook page. There, I think there's a video out there. So that's exciting. One big thing about Jubilee is it's a great opportunity for a lot of our service organizations and different charity groups to raise a lot of money. And one group that's joining us with a fundraiser this year that has not in the past, and hoping they get a lot of, a lot of people signed up, is Williamson Performing Arts is going to do an event in the tent from 12 to 2 on Saturday. I, I always struggle with describing these things. My, my wife did it with a bunch of her girlfriends. It's where usually you go out someplace and they teach you how to paint a specific scene. This is called Paint Your Poison, and they're bringing the artist into the tent, and they're selling tickets. I think there's $35 a ticket with $10 of each ticket going to Williamson Performing Arts, and you get two hours to paint your scene with the artist.
Nice.
So that's really cool. They're selling those tickets in advance. The event's up on the Red Cedar Jubilee website. They have, we have our full list of events on there. I took our flyers to print with Mr. Don Bixler last week over at Limner. So hopefully we'll be, have those back in two weeks, and they'll be all out in the businesses. I'm going to be putting a schedule up on the Facebook page, possibly tonight. But we also, I also know we're still working on a couple things that weren't quite the whole way there for the schedule. Some stuff with the National Guard that hopefully we can, we can put together that'll be really cool, if people like it.
When do the ducks go on sale?
The ducks, I believe, they started, I saw them two weeks ago when I was at the farmer's market. I'm assuming that they were there last week, but I was not. I didn't make it to the market. But, so they, they started going on sale two weeks ago. The Rotary is doing the duck race again, so make sure everybody gets out, gets their duck race tickets. Friends of Williamson Park has their Uker tournament going on Thursday.
Isn't there a golf ball drop this year?
Yes, there is.
That's brand new.
So this is brand new, and I'm still figuring out exactly how this works. But the Williamson Chamber of Commerce is putting on a golf outing Sunday. And at 3 o'clock during the golf outing, they will have been, they're selling, and I don't know how much they are. I forgot. I can't remember that off the top of my head. They're selling golf balls, and your golf ball, I'm assuming, is going to be numbered, and they're dropping all these golf balls from a helicopter. That's a Brookshire. And then somehow.
Well, isn't it, whatever ball is closest to the pin is the golf ball wins. I'm assuming.
I have gotten the.
From the helicopter?
I know, I know the ball drop is happening.
Okay, all right.
I don't know. It's a chamber.
You don't know the rules.
Or helmet if you're playing, man.
Right.
Lori from Hammer Pixley is our current chamber president. I'm sure she has all the details.
Putting it up on the Facebook page so everybody can see and be able to get their golf ball tickets or your duck tickets.
I sent out a flyer for the golf outing on the Facebook page, I think, earlier this week. There's also one out there for the Rotary. So there's a lot of different fun things like that happen. Oh, we have, everyone has been asking forever for us to get more rides, because when Tommy and I were younger, when the mayor and the mayor were younger, was, there was always a big carnival, right? Well, the last few years, we've had the smaller carnival rides for the kids, and when we tried to reach out for our contact for those, he had. and when we tried to reach out for our contact for those, he had retired. But the gentleman who bought all of his rides contacted us, and it's not going to be a full-size midway, but this gentleman does have some larger rides for the teenagers. So we're not the full, we're not the whole way back to a midway yet, but it's a large step forward. So hopefully people will be excited about that. And we also are going to have exotic animal petting zoo and pony rides Wednesday night for kids.
So...
Chief looks like he's headed over for a pony ride.
Oh, yeah. So Citizen of the Year, so it's going to be Monday night.
Citizen of the Year dinner is Monday night.
Kids' parade on Wednesday.
Kids' parade's Wednesday, so we have Citizen of the Year dinner Monday night.
Yep.
The Rotary is heading that up this year. If you would like tickets, I'm going to be putting something on the next couple days on how to get your Citizen of the Year tickets. We're taking, we're still taking nominations for Citizen of the Year through June 10th. For people that don't know, Citizen of the Year is an award given out to an outstanding volunteer in the Williamson area. And how that gets decided is people can be nominated with a nomination letter all year long, and then a representative from a lot of the different service organizations votes right before Jubilee. So it's not just Jubilee that decides that. There's usually a representative from the Rotary, Kiwanis, some of the other service organizations, and we look over all the nomination letters, and those all get voted on. So that'll happen Monday night. Then we have the kids' parade Wednesday with the Boy Scouts games and the petting zoo and whatnot. We have food trucks joining us every night that the food and beverage tent is open. That schedule is up on the website. We have most of the food trucks that came back from last year and adding a couple new ones.
Cornhole.
Cornhole will be there. New shirt. Should have printed off the schedule. I didn't know what was going to happen.
I told you I was putting you on the spot tonight.
You did. And then I got caught up in kids' homework, and I forgot to bring it.
You're doing great, though. You're doing great.
Car show.
The car show, yes. The Taylor Smith Memorial Car Show down at the Eagles is still going on Saturday, and their chicken barbecue. Oh, Girl Scouts. This is a new event that has not happened previously. The Williamson Girl Scouts troop is putting on a youth talent show, and they're actually looking for people to register early. That is Saturday after the parade. But there, and there's a flyer that's been put out a couple times on the Jubilee Facebook page. There's a website that you can go to to register. There's also a QR code that you can scan that'll send you straight there. But they're looking for elementary and middle-school age kids to come out and do a talent show. And then after they are finished up, the School of Rock House Band from Oakhamis, which is all kids who have been learning at the School of Rock Music School in Oakhamis, are going to put on a concert. So that's new. We haven't done that before. That'll be Saturday in the park.
Okay.
We have that. The demolition derby's still going on.
Where does that happen?
The demolition derby happens in...
Dulster Park.
Our Dulster Park. That is at 6:00.
In the stadium or right in front of the sledding hill?
So we actually, that area in front of the sledding hill gets transformed into a racetrack for one night. We bring out sewer pipe, and we actually connect it all together, and then we back it all up with dirt. And then we'll have an enduro race, which is a race where you're allowed to hit each other, hit all the cars, but you have to complete a number of laps. Tommy's actually won that a couple times. But, and then when they're done, we have a demolition derby. The demolition derby has been the keystone event for Jubilees basically 51 years. It actually got started with a state troop, who, there was a bunch of guys that were having demolition derby in one of the gravel pits around here, and the state trooper was watching them from the top of the pit and came down and goes, "You guys should do, make this a regular thing." And that is the next thing they knew. It became a part of Jubilee. And it used to be big enough that it was on local TVs. Channel 6 would come out, film it live, put it on TV.
How many cars did they play?
Oh.
It varies year to year.
Can I add something to that real quick?
Yes, go ahead.
So anybody that, you know, has followed the demolition derby for years, it kind of, it transpired through the years, and it got more and more competitive, and rules kind of changed and evolved. And what it ended up doing is it got so competitive that it kind of cut out anybody that wanted to enter in, you know, with wet feet and try it out. Well, a couple years ago, Chris made a good decision and implemented what they call like a bone stock demolition derby. It's only front-wheel-drive cars. It can only be four- and six-cylinder cars. And there's like no welding, no engine changing, no bumper changing. This is like the old days.
Old school.
Bang the windows out of a junk car and go smash it. So if you've ever had interest in trying it, anybody.
Yep.
And you've got a junk car laying around, you can go find one from your neighbor that they want a couple hundred bucks for or whatever. Buy it and go try it. It's the funnest thing you'll ever do.
I'll put a plug in here again. Tommy, Tommy got this going. Tommy used to, Chris Lloyd is now our derby coordinator. He's been doing a great job about the last three, four years. For about six years prior to that, Tommy's been the coordinator. And he actually, a gentleman from Red Cedar Veterinary who'd never raced anything in his life, hadn't worked on a car at all, went down to Tommy's shop, and he still had T-bones, and goes, "How do I do this?"
Well, he was starting.
Oh, he won the raffle car. He won the raffle car.
And he was like, "I don't know about this," and we put a helmet on him and shoved him in the driver's seat and said, "Don't let go of the gas pedal."
So Gorden...
That's awesome.
So Gorden Maierman, who owned Bill's Record Radiator, Jubilee was struggling for money. And it was kind of tough times economically, and we're going paycheck to paycheck for insurance year to year. And Gordy goes, "What if I build you guys a car and you raffle it off for the right to drive it that night?" And we've been doing it ever since, and this gentleman won the raffle car, and then he built a car himself, having never done it before for about three years running. So that...
It got really...
That's how, that's how simple some of these builds are, and with Chris bringing back what they call the gut and go, your backyard mechanic can definitely do it again.
Awesome.
I actually ran it by the Wilson Talent Center administration today to see if we could build a car over there and let a student drive it. This is not while we're... We're going to keep trying.
So check out redcederjubilee.com and Red Cedar Jubilee Facebook page. We've got all kinds of information out there for the stuff I missed.
Excellent. I think, you know what? I think you did good.
Thank you.
Noah, any comments?
No other comments.
Terry?
No, no, it's good job. Wow. I spent two weeks putting together the flyer, so hopefully...
All right, Tom.
I pretty much spoke my piece, but there is probably a big thanks to these people, everybody, including Dan, that puts on the Jubilee.
Yes.
If you guys have been part of it, if you haven't, you need to. It's kind of the spirit of downtown Williamson. It's kind of like, you know, it's the one week out of the year that kind of brings a lot of pride, brings people back to the whole town and checking out. To look at the event from a bird's eye view, you would think there's a group of 5,000 people that put this thing on, and there's really not. There's a handful of people that pluss plug to get on, and that's appreciated.
Yeah.
Where is the website? What'd you say, Jubilee?
Redcederjubilee.com.
Yep, and they also have the Facebook page, too.
Red Cedar.
Yep. So I will just echo all of that because, you know, COVID put us on pause. We were able to get it going again last year, which was better than I think anybody could have expected. This year is going to be amazing as well, so that's why I wanted Dan to have some time tonight to speak about it because it's so important, what Tom just said, too. It is the highlight of our summer. We do have our ban shell evenings on Thursday. We do have our farmers markets on Sunday. But Jubilee to Williamson, it's just, it's special. And I know every other community has their festivities, but really, there's something about Jubilee that if you've never been, you should come, and if you've been coming, keep coming. So with that, I will go ahead and adjourn us... Oh, no.
You forgot audience participation.
Oh, audience participation. I am so sorry. Do we have anybody else in the audience that would like to speak? Come forward. No? All right. Sorry about skipping that. We just got so excited about Jubilee, and that's not a bad thing. But I will go ahead and call this meeting adjourned at 7:40.